And if you ever need to give me something in that garage, I'm not just walking. There's been some stuff stolen on our house.
Wait, yeah. Can I meet Claudia?
Who do you want Megan to be?
She can be a guest until the board shows what they did.
Okay. You want a train chair?
Clark, that's part of the sign, doesn't it? You do what you will.
Good.
I was gonna give her a brief look at that. Hi Christina.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Um.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Claudia.
So the voice is my phone, I haven't had a call.
Yeah.
She said you did my best, so there's a copy, this is the copy of Megan's.
That is a way.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
I have Gary for one.
That's.
I didn't get her email.
I gotta put the time, um, time on this one, but that's another problem, it's outside. How are you doing, I'm doing.
Hello.
You wanna sit here?
No, you're fine.
I'm gonna ask her to sit down.
Okay.
This one's kinda cute.
Those are cute?
She's bent.
My father's stuck there.
Yeah, you, what are you up to? I slipped up.
Yeah, Bill.
Well, you have to do a timeout.
Hell of a day. I mean, a hell of a day. I fight that ice and snow. All day.
Bad this morning, but.
I can't hear that word.
I'm gonna go first right here.
You're taking a longer timeout and then you say, recess is up the right word?
No, you're not.
Yes.
I like it.
They call it the messy code.
I need that. I don't ever take care of my hair. Put them behind it.
Yeah, I'm making a copy actually. So you want your computer from that way?
Are you Megan? I work at Walmart E C.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Do you like it?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a C S D, I'm like a trainer out there. I love my job. Like with a passion.
What's it called?
Walmart E C.
Oh, okay, okay.
What's this?
Um, this is Megan's.
Dave, uh, our good sir, that'd be good.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All over. Well, you don't matter, man.
Show this to Megan.
Yes, I did.
What's this thing?
That's my pile of stuff.
All right.
I'm gonna have to knock a coat or not. I have long sleep on. Yep, I see the sign there. Are you ready to talk?
We'll call a meeting to order for January the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Last meeting, we had no forum, so this'll be the meeting for that. These roll call, please.
Six thirty P M.
In your name, ma'am?
Linda.
Christina.
Stacy Kimmel. Ma'am?
She said Christina.
Christina, who's that?
Okay.
Carry away.
You gotta watch your body, she's a drop on eggs. Uh, okay.
Hey, Claudia Dan, Jeffrey Clark. How'd I have the listeners give your names over here?
Megan.
Okay. And your last name?
Augie.
And who's next? I can't see.
If I want to.
Bill Ebblin?
And then there we need to, um, announce there that last person, um.
Let's do the legislative.
Who's absent?
Well, roll call that Vicki. Vicki Smith is absent.
Federal agents, everybody else, ready?
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments.
Anybody?
Yeah. Bill Ebblin. It may take longer than five minutes, so you'll call all of them out here.
We'll go through something you need to.
I'm very serious. My water meter has got a leak. I called seven times to get somebody out there. Three times each day. One another day. I probably put a note out here on the door for somebody to tell, take my water leak. And I told him on the message, you can play it right here, if he ain't arranged it. I said, dig it up, if my meter is close to my meter, if it's on me, I'll be glad to pay for it. No problem. They dig it up. Damon called me. It was about four days later, five, I think, probably put the note up there, five days, I dug with the water leak. Damon called me, said he dug it up, had his hands on the leak himself, felt the water, and I'm sorry to not to fix it. To cover it back up. Why? I'm not making none of this up. Not making none of this up. Why? Why did it take s- s- seven messages? I left a message, did anybody play him or they all, I got, I got him broke down at home, I wrote everyone down.
Would you like me to go ahead and respond to you, Bill?
Do what?
You want me to respond to you?
Uh, I wanna know why.
Okay.
It wa- no. Damon had his hands on the leak. And he said, Gary said not to fix it.
Is it on our side or their side, or your side?
I'm so sorry, honey, I can't hear you.
Was it on our side or your side?
It don't matter. It was on my side, but it was right in the, in the leak. But the message says, well, you've got it dug up, fix it. You understand what I'm saying? I said I would be glad to pay for it. So now, we're gonna have to have an outfit that, I got a voicemail that's supposed to be in there Friday, it wasn't there Friday, it's supposed to be there Saturday, it wasn't there either one. And we're gonna have to pay for an outfit out St. Francisville to pay, dig that up. I wanna know something. If Damon could take his hands on the water leak, he said, Bill, I feel it with my hands, Damon wouldn't have no reason to lie to me. No reason to lie. Now we gotta pay somebody from St. Francisville to dig it up again. We got two city employees. Why? I'm not mad, why? Business is business, why? I gotta pay for it, but I'm not paying for any of that water that's going out now, I done called. They got me on hold. You understand what I'm saying? But why? Why?
Can we answer you now?
Have you been?
Well, Damon lied to me.
I've been very much involved in this, would you like me to respond?
Well, why, why did it take, can I ask, I wanna, before you answer that question, I got another question. Why did it take me putting a note on the door after s- three and a half days?
From my understanding, Damon had a massive leak and it was gonna flood his house, and he had to take care of that.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We got, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I don't know anything about that, but I don't know about that on the door.
What if we had a main blowing up out there? I can't get nobody to return my call.
Um.
Are you taking notes on this?
I show.
What are you, newspaper? What are you?
You're using your time up.
Huh?
I applied for a job.
Did what?
I applied for the job.
God, God bless you. I'm glad.
Let's stay focused.
I'm glad.
Ew.
Yeah.
What I have.
Wait just a second. I'm not.
I'm glad I didn't understand it.
I went with Damon over to your house.
Yeah, I, he told.
We dug all that gravel out the inside of that meter, and he didn't tell me he could fill it.
Well, he told me.
The only thing I did, I asked him, I said, is the, is the needle turned a nitty and it was just barely moving.
He, he said he put his hand on the water leak. Now, I don't know, Damon would not lie to me, I don't think, he would lie to me.
He didn't tell me that.
Well, 'cause that's what he told me, and I, and I'm not mad, but I don't understand why now. And I was willing to pay, you run your answering machine, you'll say I was.
I, I, I've seen that.
I was willing to pay for it, I, I don't understand.
I listened to the messages on the answering machine, I agree that you left seven, at least seven messages, I never saw a note on the door, which doesn't matter.
I did, uh.
However, I, we talked to Mr. Speedy, he said, I will have to work him in, I'm very busy now, we got lots of problems, I'll try to get there on Friday to take a look, but I know I can't fix it on Friday, but I'll come back on Saturday after I know what I need. So.
I ain't nothing, nothing.
And that message was left at your house?
Nothing was.
So I don't, so he didn't?
No, I got the message that you left, but they never showed up.
Okay.
They did, uh, Mr. Moody, Moody did call, I didn't quite understand what he was trying to tell me, so I had him speak with Damon, and Damon and I spoke about it again, I remember, uh, Damon told me he could not fix the problem, and then at that time, I, I told him that we had instructions from you to go ahead and get it fixed, that we would call Speedy, he's someone that we use often, um, and so, that's what we did, we followed up with Speedy, Speedy, come to your house, still was not unsure where, what the problem was, 'cause he did not see the leak, he spoke with, um, Sloth, and I don't know where they're at on it now, so, they, they've been on it.
Are they, are they on it?
Yes, and I have record of every phone call, the time and day you called, once on Sunday, twice on Monday, three times on Tuesday, and once on Wednesday.
Yeah, seven nights.
So, and, um, and I recorded that too, and of course, you know, they check the phone every day, and, um.
Well, why wouldn't somebody return my call?
I believe they did, so.
No, nobody ever returned my call.
Damon told me he did talk to you, Bill.
Four days later. Four days later, after I put a note on the door.
Didn't I talk to you on Wednesday? Wednesday was the day I was here all day long, and I believe I called you.
No, you didn't call me on Wednesday, you called me on, uh.
Yes, it was Wednesday.
It wasn't Wednesday. Okay, but I called three times prior to that, that's my date.
Yes.
But why, I don't understand why, if we had a catastrophe, who's, who's in charge of this dog and police show anyway?
Do you get water? Do you have water right now?
Yes, but, okay, well, we grow a main out there, hon, I was on the board six years. We had it fixed, we fixed it, we didn't call somebody to St. Francisville.
But it's.
Wait a minute, I'm not, wait a minute.
It was, it was something that.
How you're just, you're just supposed to be taking care of money, I'm talking to the board.
She's the clerk, and Damon, um, explained to me that it was a job you could not do, and then at that time, we called in Speedy, Speedy Moody to help with the problem. Lorraine notified us that you had called, and that's when we went and looked at you.
Why can't we fix it? Why do we have to wait? We got two city employees.
Sir, we're, we're doing the courtesy of hiring a, hiring someone to come out and fix it for you, would you like to go ahead and do it yourself?
What do they say to Dave?
That's the other option.
What is it? Why can't we fix? Why couldn't we fix that? Well, I mean, we got two city employees, I offered to pay, uh, send me a bill, I was gonna pay it.
Do they know how to fix it?
Being, being.
Damon said he did not know how to fix it.
It's right there in the meter base, right there.
Damon said he did not know how to fix it.
But what if he goes to try to fix it, but he doesn't know how to fix it, and he fixes it wrong? Then we're just in more trouble.
We're, no, 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 we're insured for that, we're insured for that, yes, we are, yes, we are. I guarantee, look at me, but.
Would you like Mr. Moody's number?
We are in char- we are, we got insured for that.
I can give you Mr. Moody's number.
That's why we got liability.
But if it's on your end, why are we trying to get it fixed?
Can I put a piece of paper, I'll write his Moody's number down, give you.
Is he gonna come fix it or not?
I.
But you have a, Damon said he had his hands on.
Lorraine just said that he told that she told you.
Damon told me he had his hands on the water leak.
And it was not.
And if Damon don't know how to fix it, then why would you want someone to fix it?
We got Chris Bobbin, he knows all that, he worked for me for three years.
You might wanna call him and hire him instead of having a village.
Chris worked for me three years. Chris, we did have a little talk. He worked for me three years. Good man, he's a damn good man, Chris is, and I think Damon is too.
Here's Speedy Moody's number, he's the one that we have asked to look at it, you can talk with him or you can hire someone else.
But why did it take, oh, you still ain't, you still.
Bill, I think the reason they think they can't do, 'cause there's a lot of gravel there that they gotta dig up.
They did get, dig it up, he got, he got down below it, and he said it's not something he could fix, that's what I'm explaining.
Is she talking about me? Were you talking about me? What'd you say?
I repeated, he did get down to the, below it, below the rock, the mayor wasn't sure of that, and I said he did, it's something he cannot fix, and that's why we went with Moody, 'cause you requested that we go ahead and follow through and get it fixed. So that's where we're at on it, and if Moody's not doing it fast enough, or you.
I didn't say that, I did not say that, why we got to?
Or you can hire someone separate.
She overtalks me.
You're, you're repeating.
Okay, I don't, I just don't understand why it takes that long. And your answer is you got water, but I'm not paying for none of it, took it fixed.
That's correct, I believe you, you talked to Lorraine about that, and you're not being charged for.
Thank you, I'll call him, see when he, when he's gonna do that, thank you.
The water is on your side.
I appreciate you listening to me, I may have rumbled on, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Dave?
Dave King? Okay? Why we got two workers if they can't dig up a water meter and fix it? What are we paying them? What are we paying them for if they can't do their job? Where, where was the interview at? You said they knew how to do the job? We got two town workers we're paying, can't even dig up a water meter and fix it for this man, it was two pretty days they could've done that. Beautiful days, and they can't get a shovel and dig up two foot old dirt or rock?
Twenty years I've never been laid on water, Bill.
And on top of that, where was your meeting on how much you was gonna pay them? What was their working hours, they just show up when they want? You're supposed to have a meeting, a closed meeting, to discuss this and have it in the minutes, you did not have one. You did not have one. So you got two town workers, you just turn around, now you're paying them taxpayers' money, and didn't even have a meeting over it, put it in the minutes. You're supposed to have a meeting and have a closed meeting and discuss it, you just don't discuss, what'd you do, over the phone? How'd you start paying them? When you hired them, you said you could hire them, where was the minutes at to pay them? Well, nobody knows. I guess you had a form outside to learn how to pay taxpayers' money to town workers, is what it sounded like to me.
The three minutes on it?
Nope, they didn't have a form or nothing, no meeting, no nothing on how much they was gonna pay these workers. Where was the meeting at? And then you just hired two people, and then they didn't, can't even dig up a water meter. Well, you know, it's, huh, you know, just like the shelter house, where was the five hundred dollars for that? I asked for it to be in the agenda, I don't see it. I don't see that anywhere. It wasn't in the agenda, 'cause I wanted to know where it was at in the minutes, I remember you sitting here against the wall, said we need vents, that's as far as I remember it getting. Far as it being in the grant, it was over with. And for the hundred dollars that went, or two hundred dollars, we spent on firewood, when we cut that pilot up there, I said, all right, I wanna know where the money's going before I even bid on anything. You just decided to put it in the general fund to pay for the chainsaw that went in there, and I remember it, 'cause I wanted to know before I even bid on that wood, and now you rolled out of the general fund and put it in the shelter house, the shelter house has got its own fund, you don't take it out of the general fund and put it in the shelter house, or the baseball park fund, you misappropriated money again. You slid it under the table like, oh, we don't remember that, I do, I was sitting in the meeting when it happened, I got it on video. And video ain't gonna lie to me, and I was sitting in the meeting, it don't lie to me.
You get an answer?
Well, you ain't gonna get an answer out of these.
Can anybody reply on that? I'm, I may be, I'm out of time, but can anybody reply on that?
I got something else to bring, I wanna bring up. I seen these here, uh, ordinance you put out for us when we're talking and stuff like that, interrupting and all that, another ordinance. I seen that ordinance another time, is when I said the filing come, or the records, I didn't say filing come, I said records, come back to City Hall. And I had it. Lynn, Lynn to get up in my face with her finger and shaking at me, and she just got down there sitting, telling us about doing things. Stacy did, Butch did, Butch was gonna leave. But just use what the ordinance is at us. And that's what I can't understand, that's okay for the public, you're trying to keep the public from talking. I got ordinances, I remember, four months ago, I asked you about these pictures, see them? I give you a bunch of these, it's junk, trash in yard. See them pictures? I give them to you, four months ago, and they, nothing been done, what's the problem? See these pictures? All this trash in the yards, and this is the ordinance with your names on it, seventy-two hours, don't do it, we're gonna find you, come and haul it off, stuff like that, that was an ordinance, you just like to throw ordinance at the public, but you can't take care of the ordinance in the book? For other people? You just, you just picking on people now? What it sounds like to me, we got them for vehicles around town, sitting around, they're nuisance. And on top of that, they're not even supposed to be sitting in the yards, junkers, clunkers, anything, they're either supposed to be covered up, off the street. I got them sitting down here, wood, tars, vehicles sitting in the streets, nothing's been done. But you wanna set, put ordinances at us, the public, trying to tell you, every time we try to tell you something, you just want to throw an ordinance at us, but you just can't take care of the ordinance? In the book, to take care of the town? There's a problem here. And far as sliding this money for the wood and stuff? Okay, and hiring employees that don't have meetings, they can't even dig up a water mine or water meter? They can't even dig up a water meter, what we got them for then? What we do, pay them one fifteen dollars and the other ten, or we pay them both the same, or sixteen dollars?
Anybody answer?
As far as them F O I As I've been filing? I'm, they're not even filled out right. I got her sticker on it, her address sticker, it don't say Village of Belmont on it. It's supposed to have village, where it come from. And on top of that, you're not supposed to take the records home, the laptop, records, this is your office, not your home. I've been thinking about getting a state police coming in, doing an investigation, 'cause you're taking records out of the City Hall.
You can't do that, let us, you can't do it. You cannot leave anything, cannot leave here, it cannot leave.
You just gotta know how to run the board, if you just can't, can't get somebody to do work for town, start your community club out in the shelter house, let somebody on the board that knows how.
Any, get any answers from it?
I ain't gonna get answers out, 'cause they can't answer nothing.
Somebody, well, I got a question, I know I'm out of line, but that ordinance he's talking about, can somebody explain that to me? What ordinance you talking about?
Well, records, leaving City Hall, most possible.
Oh, I thought you said there's an ordinance about the meetings.
About the meeting? Well, you got all kind of ordinance on the meeting. There's one right here.
What was you talking about, my friend?
Right there, minutes on the meetings, how to run the board.
Damn it, it won't do, all good.
Trash in here, they throw ordinance at us, but they can't take care of the ones that are even in the book. So we can't, we got two town workers who can't even dig up a water hole. Two shovels, digging up, look at it, see what it needs, early in the morning, so you can go get parts for everything closes. It's a shame.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'd like to take floor one more time, please.
No, our ordinance says that you take floor once.
I'm gonna take floor again. I'm gonna take floor. I got records of, the employees work record. Maybe you're gonna pay no attention. Damon Sloth put four hours on an air compressor. What did he do? You signed off of it, Stacy, you're supervisor, what did he do to it?
I don't sign off on it.
Yeah, you, your name's on top of the worksheet.
Tars.
That's because I'm over.
Vehicle.
Yeah, it is.
And we have people who are here raising the fuss, and they're not.
We're not raising a fuss?
Your head is rolling.
That we've set forth, and they're gonna keep interrupting each other, not waiting for answers, uh, things like that, so, um, we'd like for somebody to come and ask them to leave.
Oh, my God.
Been, um.
Calling interrupted.
They called the law. Just called the law.
Market Street, thank you.
Why?
That's fine, that's fine, I got Bill.
I've got it on video.
I never wrote that one.
We got Bill Ebblin and David King. Thank you.
I think I'm gonna file harassment charges. What'd you call law on us for, hon? What'd you call law on us for?
Cause we asked you to sit down and let us conduct our meeting.
Do what?
We're trying to conduct the meeting, you don't want to, you won't, don't wanna wait for answers because.
I asked for answers.
We asked for answers, don't give us none.
Also, whenever someone is speaking, and you wanna ask us what the answer is, but you don't want to be interrupted. So we're giving you your full five minutes, Mr. King probably talked twelve minutes at least, didn't pay any attention when the two different bells went off.
Bells, I didn't know I was going by bells.
Okay, now we need to continue our meeting.
You called law, make it, I, I asked you a question?
Bells went off, not supposed to recognize bells.
Yeah.
You called law, make it, I asked you a question?
Close the floor. We're about to take a recess.
You cannot group. You cannot group in a recess. Just for information, you guys cannot hang out together in a recess. You go ahead, but you can't, that's a form.
Well, we can recess and we can continue.
It's a misdemeanor, second class.
Be quiet, we can continue our meeting.
I agree.
If they continue to be unruly, then we will.
I have one.
But I, I think we can continue.
I never said nothing, I wanted to know where the.
Nobody told me about bells.
What's a bell for?
I don't know. I don't see it on the agenda.
You called the law, maybe. We're asking a question. We're gonna. We're gonna try to go ahead and get this meeting done with, okay? I'm just gonna go call turf. That's what I'm gonna call.
Need to approve the pack meeting.
I'm sorry.
We do have two sets of minutes, sorry.
What did I do?
Nobody done that, no. They just can't stand the truth.
I don't know what I asked. I think I'm gonna file a charge against that girl on the corner, down there. She mentioned my name, I think I'm gonna file a charge against her.
I don't know, we got a town board member, ain't been here for five months.
I wasn't out of my time, though.
All of a sudden, we got a town board member showing up five months later. I guess holding a fort, holding a seat.
Do you need me to make some additional copies?
I'm gonna wait on her, they're gonna lock me in, I don't know. And then you call turf, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call my lawyer.
Go call him.
I'm gonna call.
Need a motion to approve of the pack meeting.
I'll make the motion.
That would be the January, uh, no forum meeting, that is? Okay, so Stacy was a first and Linda a second. That was a red floor.
Okay, so motion has been made that the, uh, minutes for the January seventeenth, I'm sorry, January twelfth meeting, be, uh, passed. Motion was made by Stacy to, uh, approve the minutes and seconded by Linda. Need a roll call vote, uh, so.
All in favor?
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, sorry.
She's asking for the January.
Here's the January, can you read that real quick?
So, yes. She did say. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Now, this is your updated copy. Bonnie, we have reviewed the bills since here came the house, and that was shifting on.
Well, we, we want to do this next though.
Just pounding also type paper.
Sorry, we did those out of order, so the first one should have been December sixteenth.
And the reason why we waited is because she still reviewed it.
Okay. So have you had time to review the, uh, treasurer's information?
Yeah, she gave that.
I thought Vicki had, uh, taken that location.
Are you going to announce that when you have the floor again? So, uh.
Don't write on that.
Oops, sorry, there you go. I was trying to point this out.
That'd be crazy.
When you get ready for your water report, I didn't know if you recognized where you're reading, okay?
I seen it on this paper right here.
Okay. Wanted to be sure you saw that correctly. Did you guys figure out what to do about the, uh, dumpster that got lit on fire here? Um, they came down, police report was filed, they came and looked at it. And, uh, said that we did not have to replace it at this time, since the report was going on, but when we were ready, they were bringing it on to the school. And the dumpster? We haven't decided on that, that is something that we wanted to break down before, because we're wondering if just do.
I can't hear you back here.
We're talking about the dumpster at the park, on if we've decided what we're gonna do with it, since it's still under investigation, and if we even need dumpster?
And Christina, that is something that we can discuss, if we can't vote on that this evening, because it's not on the agenda, but we will get it there. I thought you all brought it up, will you make a note of that, Claudia? Yeah, I believe that I addressed the water leak at Bill Evelyn's. And then, um, last month, December, I addressed, um, a concern about the wood that was sold and what money that it would go into. And we had originally, from the beginning, said that it would go into, um, the park slash shelter house. And, um, what's it look like?
Ballpark.
Ballpark and Shelter House. And, and that's exactly where it went. Um, Mister, uh, King had, uh, was concerned that the $500 that was paid to finish the job at the Shelter House was addressed also last month and the month before, I will address it again this evening. That money did come from the Shelter House Fund. The Shelter House Fund never had to borrow money from general funds to do that. That was in discussion back in two thousand twenty, but that never took place because the Shelter House earned enough money to pay for those, um, building shit on the end of the building. Uh, it did not get done for over a year because Mister Wes had gotten sick. And because he originally did the job, it was just a continuation of his job. And so that, that did take place and that money was paid for out of the Shelter House Funds. There was never a transfer from general funds for the Shelter House. And again, I, I had addressed that, this will probably be my third time. And I think that we also, um, did a FOIA request, pointing out that information also. First discussion of that was in July, when we realized that there was some humidity problem. It was in the July two thousand, one meeting. And so, and then there was the work that didn't get done, a lot of that fell, and then we started doing it like months later.
We need a motion to approve the, uh, December sixteenth minutes, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Did everybody get in on the other one, one, two, or, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve?
I'll first. I'll second.
Okay, so motion has been made, uh, by Linda.
Got everything on there, they can, they'll all can see it.
And seconded by Christina to approve the minutes for December sixteenth. Everyone, uh, who's, uh, approves, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
On the bills and financial reports, I, I realized they had been reviewed. I did wanna point out, um, the attorney fee. Is he behind me? Because girl, I ain't scooping up that far. We had an attorney fee.
Do you wanna do those to those bills?
Because we had someone very, um, uh, delinquent on the water bill.
These are the minutes, they told me to give them due.
Followed the process of, uh, sending out.
Aren't supposed to get them.
Letters to the, uh, property owner and the resident. And two serial numbers that were filled. And so then we had to get the attorney involved to go ahead and put a lien against the property. I am very pleased that the resident did come forth and pay their bill, but unfortunately, that still left us with, uh, attorney fee. I'm not sure you guys saw that and was, know what that was about.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the, uh, treasurer's report, I'm sorry, the bills to be paid?
Bills to be paid in the financial statement.
Or the financial statement?
We make a motion on that?
Okay.
Need a motion to approve the bills and financial report.
I will first. I'll second.
Is that okay?
Okay, motion has been made to, uh, approve the bills to be paid and the financial report, fiscal report. Uh, been made by Linda and seconded by Christina. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Water report. It's, uh, chlorine at the tower is two point oh. And here at City Hall is two point one.
Did you say those again, I'm sorry.
Two point oh at the tower. Oh, thank you, hon. Two point one at the shelter, to Town Hall.
It's a little chilly. My, my, I couldn't hold it, I didn't try to, my house is a seventy-five. I know, it's seventy-two. Don't forget to turn it back down.
Old business? You ready for your old business?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, appointment of Secretary Treasurer is. Megan Aki, is that what you're here for?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
I interviewed, excuse me, I interviewed, uh, Megan Aki on, uh, January twelfth, I found her very well qualified for the job. She has, uh, a lot of experience using QuickBooks, which is the same, uh, accounting software that's used for the, um, uh, bills being paid and keeping track of the balances of each of the funds that the city, uh, the Village of Belmont holds. She has done similar work in the past at her, uh, other job, which is for the, uh, Edward County Farm Bureau. She's also very familiar with the types of, uh, meetings that we are holding. And, uh, found her very well qualified. She lives within, uh, close enough, uh, to the village that she can easily come and do, um, projects that we need. And she's also free each evening to work on, uh, work that needs to be done for the village. And so how do you recommend her?
Yeah, need a motion to.
Hire. A point.
Hire, a point, a point, that's good words.
I don't know, she'll be brought on, um, we can like in three months or something, if we wanna change salary, but otherwise, it's assuming she comes in just the same as our previous treasurer. That's the same way it was with employees also. Now, if you're, if you'd like to, you can. Um, I, I will, uh, first the appointment, is that how I say that, first?
No, I'm sorry.
How's that, how does that sound?
You approved the appointment?
Yes. So that's it, you say each one of our names and we say if we approve or disapprove. Very good, thank you.
Is there a second, or do you need a second for this one?
Well, it's, it's all favors of yes and no, so Linda, yes.
Okay. Roll call vote for the rest of the votes?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So that's a unanimous? Hello, sir, thank you for coming.
You wanna stand by while we continue our meeting, so that there's no other, uh, okay, thank you, appreciate that. Do you have a copy of the oath right now, Megan, that you can read?
You're welcome to join the table.
You'll read that out loud for everybody and then we'll, we'll sign it.
Raise your right hand, please.
Okay, so I just, uh.
Yeah.
Aye, Megan. Okay, look at her. I, Megan Aki, having, having been elected to the Office of Secretary Treasurer in the Village of Belmont, in the county of, uh, Wabash. Of course said, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Village of Belmont, the Village of Belmont, to the best of my ability.
Okay, and Megan, I wanted to point out that here that you've been appointed, election is actually when you go through the election process.
Okay.
Okay?
So do I need to fill all this in?
Um, the court will take care of the rest of it till you, and then she'll have you sign it. Thank you.
And I'll do this after, you mean after following the meeting?
With this being said, I want to, um, note that Megan is, is our new appointed treasurer. We will be letting Watler go after proper training with her. We will not have the position that we had back with Shauna, that was a secretary treasurer. She did not do any monies, Megan will be taking care of all the money affairs. She is our appointed treasurer, there's a difference. Right now, we had a woodkeeper and a secretary, and then our secretary designed, and now.
I can't hear you over here, please.
So, okay. We appointed Megan Aki as our treasurer for the Village of Belmont.
May I say something?
No, force close.
Okay, the next one is motor field rebuild grant in process. Um, motor field rebuild grant in process. Oh, that's the property next door. Um, Mister Guyswhite says that it is still too wet for him to come back and finish leveling off the ground, and once that is done, we will be getting chat. Um, I do have a volunteer outside of town that is helping me, um, find out where we wanna get that chat. Uh, we will try to get the best price we can to do that, probably later on in the spring when it's not so wet. We still have the. We spent sixty-five hundred on that grant so far, and we were agreed up to eighteen thousand for the use, um, of buying that property and making it into a, um, louder, and making that into a parking lot slash storage, block storage. Uh, we've talked to the employees about moving that rock, but again, we're waiting for the ground to get firmer, um, to move that rock back in there. It doesn't look like we're gonna have to take trees in the back, we won't have to take any trees down, we're gonna be able to lose some of that equipment, and then they can get it out to that walk, uh, sens- sensibly. Uh, we've also contacted the, uh, railroad, um, people. When they took the ties, ties off the railroad, they sell to a scavenger unit, and the scavengers, they, Salvage is their name, Salvage. And they gather them up, and then you gotta catch them at the right time, and so our employees are aware of that, they're watching them, mayor's watching them, and when they come and are ready to start loading them into their big equipment, at that time, we can request that we pick up a couple of bundles, a bundle of sixteen. And, um, there's a phone number that the employees have that they will contact, and, um, we will get permission to, uh, actually, they will go and make those to us, and we will not have to buy them.
So they're free?
Yeah, but we have to be there at the right time, with the right equipment, for them to be able to give them to us. If we miss that window, we miss the window. Um, I have noticed that they're backed up. I have noticed that they're backed up down here past the elevator, the old elevator, so we're keeping an eye out and we're hoping to get those and that will help us separate the rock if that's the way we go on the back of that property. So all is good on motorfield tax rebuild grant that's still in process. The USDA grant for City Hall roof and other improvements is going very poorly.
Who is getting it?
We, we had decided on Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown. We got his estimate turned in. USDA had a couple of questions about, wanted more detail on his estimate. We contacted him and he said, okay, no problem. Didn't get by well.
Can we try to contact him again? They did my citing and they were phenomenal.
Yes, I, I will tell you that I call Mr. Brown daily. I leave a message daily. And so when the last meeting, he said, the board decided, yes, we still want to go with that. So I got ahold of him and I said, okay, can you please call USDA, architect, their architector, tacker, whatever, architect?
Architect.
I didn't think my son's an architect. And see what they're needing, because we really want to go with you. And the board at that time felt like if he didn't respond to us in a timely manner, as in now, that perhaps we ought to be looking at someone else. So I did bring copies of our previous, saying that again, everyone already has this, but I wanted you to all have an updated copy of our estimates so that if we don't go with Mr. Brown, then we can continue to try to make a decision.
So, you're the only one who's contacted them? Can I have an opportunity to contact them?
Oh, yes. I have numbers, you have, in your paperwork, there's numbers of copies of the whole list, so.
I don't have.
You haven't picked up your paperwork. You have lots of paperwork except we'll get, we'll hand to you before you leave this evening. Okay? But, and then all the original file, everything original is in the office. That is usually taken care of by the clerk, and now that we have a treasurer, she will help you getting paperwork out of that office also. Everything is in there. Anything that I hand you is a copy, or my handman and stuff where I took my notes, and then a copy of my notes. So, okay. The Illinois ARPA, are you familiar with that?
No.
Christina? That is the Illinois American Rescue Plan Action that has come into effect. The village of Belmont is available for 36,000, might be 36 and a few dollars. It's going to come in two installments. We have received one installment of 18,000. We cannot spend it until we meet the approval of how it to be spent. And we have time yet to figure out when that can be, that deadline for that, how we want to spend it, I believe is April is when we need to let them know how we hope to be able to use it. And I am looking forward to Megan to being able to help us finish that paperwork up. And, and I have asked the board for ideas about that, too. It has limitations.
False charges.
You can go on to Illinois ARPA site and start reading up on it. Again, get ahold of Megan and she will be able to help you find that also. And then-
Did you have any ideas on how it could be used?
For us, my, I'm thinking water, our water would, sewer would be our best way to use it, and it's infrastructure, so there, you have certain guidelines that you have to follow. And it almost sounds like you have to spend it and then turn it in and see if they're going to reimburse it. So, we have not done any of those things, but we want to understand it completely before we do it. Okay, this, next one, Claudia, that, that is you. I do not know much what you're looking for there.
At some of the past meetings, Linda Lowery has been here to talk about two things. One of them was burning within the village, which we really can't do anything about rather than, except to tell people to stop. And the other one was improving the park, and she talks about that a lot. And I thought it might be a good idea to appoint a committee of volunteers, put her definitely on the committee and ask her if she wants to find some other people to be on the committee with her, to come up with some ideas on how to improve the Belmont Park and the shelter house and let them know what their guidelines should be. You can't do this, or you may do that, and let them have an idea, give them an idea of how much money is available to spend so that they don't go, you know, far out of the range of what is available to spend. And I think that, I thought that would satisfy them as far as helping with the park and making it nicer.
And being a dog, sure.
Yeah.
I, I know there are guidelines as far as volunteers and us being a part of the outside committee. Do you remember anything about that? How, were you ever involved in, what was it called before the village had a?
I think her dad was.
Maybe your dad?
I don't know what you're talking about.
And I don't know what-
Committee.
A committee, and they were, they weren't part of the board, and, and they cannot be part of the board, and we cannot-
They were like, what were they called? They were like, they were specifically for the park though, weren't they? They weren't for anything else? Did they do a baseball view?
I think that's what she's kind of leaning toward, to see if we can't, see if there wants to be town involvement in that again, a committee.
Different what? We can't do anything?
Yeah, we, we can't be a part of that committee vote. So I, I don't know, we, I think that, can we, Christina, can we ask you to look up the guidelines on that, that IML book? And maybe report back to us? You have a book?
I don't have a book.
Oh, my gosh.
I have no book. There is no book that has been given to me.
And no, and we have not had a secretary here in the office for you to come in and get it. So, we will take care of that again this evening. All right. Do you think that maybe you can help with that? Or do you, would you like to see if someone else? Because I, I understand what she's asking for, I just don't know the legalities of us being able to participate.
So we can't participate, whether we can or not can be looked up, but if we wanted to join in, not as part of the board, we can do that, correct? No?
I'm not sure. We really got to look at the legalities of it. I'd hate to tell you yes and then be wrong. I think it's a good idea. Hey, Mayor, we're ready for new business.
New business? I need to make a motion about changing the meeting dates.
Okay.
Christina can, she can be off on Monday and-
So with that, if you guys think Friday's better, I can change my work schedule from either Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday. So always Saturday, always Sunday, and then one or the other two. But I have to know because it's going to be set and I can't just go around changing.
And, and that, I have to admit, that's what we've been waiting to hear from you to know exactly what you could do. We are willing to change. We've had it on the agenda a couple of times, wanting to know what-
Fridays are out for me.
Okay, so no on Friday.
Might as well have on the weekend.
Fridays, Fridays are no for me because I babysit-
No Fridays.
I babysit Saturday and Sunday for my, my little guys. Okay. All right, so currently what do you, are you working?
I leave my house at 1:00 P.M. And I will be gone until way past you guys get to sleep.
Okay, and that's on Tuesday through-
Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday. When I have reviewed possible change in the meeting dates, it can be done on a permanent basis. In order to do that, an ordinance will have to be written up to do that. I was advised by IML to go ahead and leave our meeting dates as our annual scheduled time that we have now and that every, every meeting, as we've been doing at the end of the meeting, say next meeting date and actually make that change per meeting. So that's, that's what I think would be wise for us to do. And I, I don't have any problem with a Monday.
No.
So, so we don't need to take a vote to not change the meeting date permanently. We've discussed it. So, how, what does everybody else feel about that? I guess it's us three.
I'm good with a Monday.
Do, and do you understand what I'm saying about why IML says that?
I do, I understand, but I want to make sure that it's not going to roll around and then be forgotten and then I can't be here on a Tuesday. I want to make sure it's very adamant I can be here.
At every, on every agenda, we will put next meeting date down here so that you will have an opportunity to tell us exactly what you can and can't do, just as the rest of us will be able to do. Okay? And, and then at another time, if you want to bring this back to the table, by all means, we can. This is what I've learned so far, and as we all research this a little more, maybe someone else will learn more about it also. Okay. So then I guess the thing, thing now is the next meeting date, guys. Is that calendar up to date?
Would be the second Monday? Still have to be the second week.
Yeah, it, yes.
So the second Monday in February is February 7. Oh, that is a lie because that's a total lie.
Okay.
So the second Monday would be Valentine's Day.
February 14.
First Monday, uh, first Monday.
The first Monday is the 7th, second Monday is the 14th.
Well, I don't know if my sweetheart's taking me on 14th or not, y'all. I, I'm okay with it. How about yourself?
You can change it to the first Monday.
Really, y'all?
No, I'm good. I'm off all weekend.
Okay, all right. So, I'm okay with February 14th. Stacy?
You say no.
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 Can we do the first Monday or does it matter? The first Monday is the 7th.
Not me, it's a will.
I think it can be a different day. I'm going to write down page 214 if we all will study that. Your book? And-
The meeting date? Is that what you're asking?
I, I talk bill.
Sorry.
You guys want to call the cops, address your meeting, don't address us. As a public.
So, I'm sorry, what night did you say then?
So the 14th is the second, the second Monday, the 7th is the first Monday.
Okay, so we're going to consider February 7th, Stacy?
I don't understand, I just don't understand.
And Linda, I say yes to that.
And the date, the time will stay the same, 6:30?
Yes.
6:30?
And Christina? It has to be on the top of the minutes or agenda when it comes. I did do it.
Is that what it was, or?
Uh-huh. It is posted outside on the side.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll review that with you also, the changes that we made. The clerk is the one that's responsible for making sure that this is held correctly. Okay. The Illinois, Illinois Department of Transportation has sent us their new paperwork for us to start thinking about those that need to be done. I have the letter out here this evening. It's just a map of it, so if everybody wants to start thinking about what codes you think are needing done and so that we can bring that to the table next month. And then, we should be expecting the audit pretty soon also, just FYI. This is the risk management payroll audit. I'd like everyone to review this. It is already prepared and ready to mail. I just want the table to review it also. This is prepared by our bookkeeper. So all the, all the figures come from our official paperwork. This, the bookkeeper took care of this, but in the near future, maybe he'll be taking care of that. We have talked with Watler, when we brought Watler on last spring, they said that when we got a treasurer, that they would work with our treasurer and bring me up to ski. And I know that Claudia has told you they have QuickBooks, and so that should be a pretty good transition for you. And so I will be appointing Watler tomorrow of our appointment this evening, and so hopefully we can get started on that right away. It took some time for Christina to do the crossover with Watler because they had to build new stuff in their file for us, but for us to come back the other way shouldn't be quite as nice. I'm even hopeful to think that by, this is January, February bills might be able to be processed by you, so, yeah. I'm hoping that it goes that way. And if it doesn't, no pressure, we'll get there. I am still over financial right now, so, you know, when you have something, you can ask me and I can try to help to give it out the best that I can.
Bill.
This goes to the office. Claudia, I don't want this to get misplaced.
Ready for me to do this?
Pardon?
Ready for me to say anything?
She's just over reviewing one thing here and then we'll be ready. We'll be ready. Okay.
I know, they did, but-
That goes-
Oh, does it go there?
Uh-huh. Christina, I will get, I have a larger book for you. We will be very careful about this, and to help us. Yes, there, there's a book in the drawer, we'll get back to you. Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, yeah, I got, I got a couple there.
Okay, sir.
Becky Smith resigned. She resigned the last time she was here.
At the end of the meeting, okay.
At the end of the meeting.
What was the date on that?
I don't know.
December, it's, we're December 16th?
Yep, one thing. You're not going to like me, but. Huh? Meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. I first.
One second.
Me third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, the time is?
7:32.
Take the turn.
Somebody's here. And when I was a trustee, you guys said you only had one combination to the safe for me to see the cameras. Do I see the cameras now if you all want to be transparent to me? No? I guess somebody else has a combination to the safe.
I do not have a combination.
Somebody does here since Christina was the only one that had it. She resigned, so now who has it? See what I mean? I can't even get a simple thing.
I do not have, I do not.
Okay, well, can I get my FYI request that I got back in May, June, July, and August?
I was told that was during here.
But I can talk to my representatives, I can use my freedom of speech to talk to my representatives. And you aren't a representative, but I can use my First Amendment. So can I get the paperwork for that? No?
I got something for you.
Awesome.
These guys don't send a monthly report, but they send one that's quarterly.
Who is that again?
Forgot their name. I don't even know.
Is it the sewer report?
Yes, it's, this is a sewer report.
Okay, I'm asking one for May, June, July, August also.
So this is the one, this is the most recent one, so this is your copy.
Okay.
And they're going to start sending them monthly. And we called and asked for them to start being sent monthly.
Okay.
And they're supposed to be sending one that's on its way and that's all I know, but it isn't here yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Appreciate that. Is that a denial? That FYI address from Damon Sloss also. Why can't I get that?
I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, I'll show you right here. FYI request that I requested back for the question.
Yes, it was not available.
Why not?
His lawyer advised him not to do it.
You mean the village lawyer?
No, he has his own attorney.
He can't have his own lawyer, this has to do with the village. So I'll be, I'll FYI request that too. You know, I'm just warning you, you'll have a lot of paperwork coming your way then. Because I'm going to hold you guys transparent. If I, I couldn't even get anything when I was a board member. They denied me just like them cameras back there. And I'm going to get everything I requested and it's, I'm coming out. I'm just letting you know, man.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And call them the cops.
I need to know what is your name because I'm going to make a report on you, huh? What is your full name?
My name's Claudia Dant.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You live in Mount Carmel or where do you live at?
I have a Mount Carmel address.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
You want to talk to us? He called, she called law on us.
I can talk to whoever wants to talk to me.
Okay.
I'm just here to make sure.
If you resign, make sure your name, whatever, have a seal put on it and you can turn it in. Or have you, I just let you know. They don't tell you that stuff.
She's good.
I'll call him and then I, and I'll just, don't worry for Damon or what, I'll call him. But see, the only reason, the only reason, he's got a tool that he can put on that line and trick that line.
Can we get this, can we get this?
We got one, but I don't think.
Face is damn, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's only, that's only different between him and us.
Hey, I just want you guys to know another thing is, uh, one, two, three, one.
Five minute time limit and they don't give that at all, so.
Also let you know, all official records, can't leave this off.
They say that they don't want you.
I like to educate her.
Make a copy of everything and then you can take it with you.
I went to the law judge, he told us we could speak, say you haven't want to, didn't he?
You've seen it right here, first thing I'm showing.
While he's talking to, and he's, you're interrupting, you need my time to go over now. So he just goes on and on.
I was going to step outside, I don't.
I thank you for being here.
That's fine.
We got everything on record. When I sat down to mine, I told him thank you and I sat right there in that chair. And I said, I have one more thing to say. And then they run their mouth about something, I went back and sat down. And they, all right, and Dave did said something, they'll call law on us. It's under what act we can do this?
It means violation.
The judge even told the mayor that we could get up and speak, we can call him. Nothing was ever out of line. If you don't threaten, the judge, judge done, told him that. In any meaning, we can, this is a calm meeting. I asked a question, Dave was asking a question about, and I was asking a question.
It's a different time, it's a different thing, it's a, it's an ongoing thing.
He'll do it all the time. Zoella used to call the law all the time. We came out here and we asked, I'm a taxpayer, I'm twenty-seven year in this town, I was on the board six years. They're out of line.
Well, the fact is, they let.
They're out of line, son. You don't have to worry about me. He asked me about Bill, I'm a straight shooter. I'm telling you, son. I got the trucks up there. But I got questions about my tax dollars. I'm going to ask. You would too. I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers like that. You would too, son. And when they don't give you, they say, you look at that film, they ignored us. Ignored us.
Well, see, that's the thing, is every, is every month that when we come in here, certain members, certain members.
She called law on me, I don't know why.
Other certain members can't and they got shut up and just be quiet. But other people just ramble on. So it's.
But I'm, I'm willing to file false police reports against her, but she called a big phone that mentioned my name. And I sitting right there in that chair. And I'm serious. They did that to Wayne Stoneberger. He done that all the time. They come out threatening to lock him up. Wayne Stoneberger was a city worker and he called laws all the time. Well, they come out and they call laws on them kids, people one more time, they're going to lock you up. I'm sorry, son, they just bakes me. I work hard for my damn money. And I got, I've been dealing with a water leak, they won't return my call for how many days?
Spent about three weeks his water was, nonstop. They dug it up and they buried it back.
Well, I got that the lights right there on that, so if you want to lock me up, I don't, he has no reason to, son. They want you to lock me up. Well, my name's Bill Evelyn, if you, you tell. Okay, I'm a straight shooter, man, you know that. They should never call you. This, this place was calm as a cucumber and she called the law.
You can ask the county of the Belmont ordinance attorney clerk.
Yeah.
I'm going to file charges against her. Can I do that? Can I make a false police report, her calling law on me, son? Is that a possibility?
So.
I'm sitting right there. Shut up, woman. She grouped me in with Dave.
Right. So filing for like, for a false police report, that would be something that, that we would do, that, that officers do, you know?
I'm sorry, man, I shouldn't have. But son, I'm going to come here and ask questions next, baby. You understand that?
I understand.
You would too? I'm going to go home, son, I got to work, get up early in the morning. God bless you. You need something holler at. I'm not mad, I ain't mad at you, you understand that?
I'm just here to.
Referee.
Close doors, cold.
You got some point. Some people get, they don't show the time. Two people will run a clock and you got to get the full five minutes or it's open means. But you follow the terms, yeah.
Don't say, they said there's a beep and a.
That's what I'm saying, they got to warn you.
I was going to say, I didn't know.
They got to tell you when to start, they got to show you the time, what your time is, so that you know.
Beeper went off, I go, I didn't even know we had a beeper going off.
I couldn't even talk when I was a trustee.
Now what beeper?
Having a session, you have five minutes, they should just let them people fucking talk.
So you get like one five minute period.
Yes, each person gets five minutes. Here, well. Uh, you can send it to me if you want. That'd be great, we can work together, yeah. If you want, I appreciate that. But it, yeah, but see like, okay, but to the attorney general of the opening meeting, which is further down the line, and it just, this basic stuff is. I was going to say, I get five minutes to do this, then they let somebody else talk. Then everybody gets five minutes. But that's just down the line, attorney general, if you want to.
So if you're, like, interrupted during your five minutes, then?
Yes. Yeah, they can't get five minutes. Like, if I talk and the board members interrupt me during my five minutes, then the time starts over, the word stops.
Understood.
You get your full five minutes.
Understood.
And see, that's the point here is like, they don't have a clock. They do, they got a phone, but they don't show nobody. Like last time, I was a trustee, I couldn't even get a freaking clock. And then they didn't, they don't let anybody talk. And then they, they're like, oh, no, you're being too loud. Well, these guys are all invested. But, yeah, they need to be more transparent, actually have a clock, you know, this is your five minutes. Don't interrupt.
Yeah, I was talking about five minutes, but they said, well, a beeper and the alarm went off. I go, what beeper alarm? Nobody even told me anything about a beeper alarm.
You know, I mean, and yeah, you can't buy his words, it's a late number, it's a regular number.
I was going to say, this is the first time we had a beeper or alarm go off, nobody's told me anything about it.
Yeah. More transparent thing.
But you don't tell anybody anything. That's just like then, well, you should have told us before we started, we're having a beeper or alarm go off before when your five minutes is up, but.
Okay. I understand that. All right, well.
Oh, I appreciate it, man. Uh, yeah.
You guys probably get tired of coming out here. This is the first time I've seen you out here.
This is the first time I've been to one of these.
Oh, well, get used to it, probably. Well, you might get used to that. They started calling the state police instead of you guys.
Right.
Yeah.
No problem.
Hey, you're driving a truck tonight.
Real deal on the chase, I think the day shit.